I'd like to call toward the regular meeting at the Tiverton Town Council Monday, April 8th, 2013. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is absent.
Okay, the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of regular council meeting, March 25th, 2013. Receipt of minutes of the following boards and commissions: Art Council, Harbor and Coastal Waters Management Commission, Zoning Board of Review, Board of Canvases, Planning Board, Conservation Commission. Correspondence received in file. Foster Town Council, Resolution opposing mandatory bonding arbitration on monetary matters for teachers. Town of Charleston, opposing mandatory binding arbitration legislation received from Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island, request to have Armenian flag raised proclaiming April 24th, 2013 as Armenian genocide remembrance day. Kate Meeshaw, Planning Administrator Office, March report. Town Administrator, Distribution of Department reports from March. John Cudaro, Megan El Cudaro Memorial Fund, request permission to hold 5th Annual Miles for Megan Bike Ride Walk on Saturday, October 5th, 2013. Tiverton and Little Compton Police Chief Recommendations. Town Solicitor, scheduling of a public hearing on May 28th for amendment to Code of Ordinances adding new Chapter 8 substances prohibited. Is there anything the council wishes to remove?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Open forum, announcements, comments, questions. Joe Watson?
Good evening, gentlemen. If we're jacketless, I knew you would be in jackets.
Okay, Joe, sit and speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Sometimes good ideas turn out to be less than good when you have experience with them. The windmill on what was my property and our community property is in a residential and agricultural area. I want to speak against further windmills in residential agricultural areas. I think they're fine, they belong in industrial areas. The problems I've had is that guests who come to the house can't sleep when the wind blows. The production of milk by the goats falls off on days that the wind blows. The noise is great. Occasionally, I pick up dead bird bodies in proximity to the windmill. Ape production falls off too. But, and I just thought you ought to know that. Jamestown, I understand, has done a moratorium on windmills. They won't have any on the island. So I think the next time someone proposes to give us a free windmill, we look at it very carefully. And, I know it's looking at a gift horse, but it may not be appropriate for us at that location. If you want them in industrial parks, I think the payback is easier because machines sleep at night. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Barbara Pelletier?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On Saturday morning, when I left the neck to go onto Main Road, there was a 5K race in progress. And I just thought, because the traffic flow was not as smooth as it had been in the past, and I think that's because people are used to utilizing the Nonquid parking lot for traffic, and I think it'll get worse in summer as you have more of these things, which is now blocked off. So I thought before something drastic happens, that maybe somebody could review for race days, some sort of traffic, whatever, because, don't forget, you have, they were parking up at the parking lots at the various places on Main Road at the Four Corners. Then it makes you exit into traffic, into a state road right away. When you exit from Nonquid into Neck Road, you then can either go right and just gradually do whatever you have to do with whatever race you're doing, or you add a light, which is a controlled kind of exit and type of thing. So I thought just before something bad might happen someday, maybe Chief Blakey could review a traffic pattern or something for race days. That was just a thought, and it's nothing major urgency, et cetera. But, my thought.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings and public presentations. Kate Meeshaw, Planning Department, Review of Planning Challenges, Grant Project Progress and Timeline Moving Forward. Kate?
Hi, Kate Meeshaw, Tiverton Planning Department, and this is Ken Buckland from the Cecil Group, and they are our consulting planners for this project. And I will let Ken take it over.
Thank you. Tonight, we're coming before you with the draft regulation that's in place. It is not coming before you as a legislative action, but we're here to inform you of the progress. This started as a challenge grant from the state to support a team of consultants, ourselves being the Cecil Group, Union Studios, Architects Out of Providence, and Fitzgerald and Halliday engineers, consulting engineers. And with that team, what we did was look at the general commercial districts along Main Road and in Bliss Four Corners. Our intent was to create a form-based regulation to encourage quality development within those areas. The idea was that we're looking at the regulations with the intent to try to improve them so that they encourage development, but also create the character development that Tiverton would like to see. The term is called a form-based zoning regulation. In this case, it's a hybrid, because what we did was we took sections of the existing zoning regulations and zoning map and started to suggest changes to them. So there are five elements to the draft concepts we have right now. One is a change in the zoning districts, the general commercial districts, to create sub-districts and remap those areas. The other, the second element, is actual changes to the dimensional requirements and the use table within the zoning regulations for these districts. And this would modify the existing table of uses, dimensional standards, and site development standards. Third, are design guidelines. These are recommendations for how development should occur to try to create the kind of character of development that we understand that the town would like to see. These can be applied during the project design and through the design review, the project reviews. Also included, as the fourth element, are transportation improvements, improvements to the roads, Main Road and the intersecting roads within Bliss Four Corners. However, these are state roads, and so these are recommendations that would have to be negotiated with the state and potentially with the private development that comes along with, under these zoning regulations. Finally, we have a larger transportation section that we're recommending could be applicable to anywhere within the town, but just good design for roads. This is something that could be part of the comp plan as it goes through the process of being updated. And lastly, we've included some reference material as to how this design process should work, and so that we can educate not only the town and the town officials, but also the developers that come forward as to what we're trying to accomplish. What we're going to be doing next is take this through a final public process, an open house. We'll be allowing people to learn more and discuss what they see as issues with the draft regulation, finalize that regulation, and then bring it through the planning board to the town council for adoption. I would like to add that the process, council members, town staff, planning board, other boards and commissions in the town, and townspeople have been very helpful, and this has been a very worthy process that we've gone through in terms of developing this fairly complex set of regulations.
Any questions?
Just one quick question. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and input into this process. I've been to a couple of these discussions, and it's been very informative, and I think personally I've learned a lot, and I think the folks who have attended and have participated have gotten a lot out of it. So, thank you. I guess my question is, what's the timetable for these next steps in terms of the final kind of public review and input, and then bringing it back to the council?
We have not targeted the next public meeting date as yet, but this is going to happen within the next couple of months. We're going to have to finish this up and process. So we get it done before the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to note that I have met with them and reviewed it as well, so that there won't be any delay as far as final review of the ordinance. I've been looking at it as it's going. And I think you'll be providing some material at the next stage. You'll provide it to the council members, so they'll all have their own packet to see what you've got, right?
That's correct.
Did you want a joint meeting? Do you want to discuss that?
Well, that's another matter, the joint meeting. I don't know if you wanted this one to be a further joint workshop when you hold it, or with the council on this, or?
I think our next step is to do that public open house, which obviously everybody will be invited to, and then a planning board meeting, because it has to, you know, the planning board will do their review first, and then come to the town council with a recommendation. And then, at the town council level is when public hearing would be held, an advertised known as public hearing. So I will make sure that everybody is aware of all the upcoming dates when they are set.
Thanks.
Thank you so much for all the hard work that both of you are putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Board, discussion regarding comp plan.
I do want to ask to add something to the agenda.
I will entertain a motion.
Okay. With the planning board here, I would like the council to add to the agenda for purposes of discussion and scheduling only, possible joint meeting with the planning board for pre-application on an application that's been filed, or is about to be filed, by Carpiato Corp. for development on Souza Road and on Main Road, with the main entrance on Main Road. Kate, was that filed today?
No, nothing's been filed.
Okay. But, well, before I get into any details, I'll let you vote on that, but that would be my request.
I want to entertain a motion regarding a joint meeting for April 29th, 2013.
So moved.
Second. Time, place?
Well, first of all, I just wanted to explain what it was. Before you, what I need you now is just to vote on to add it to the agenda for discussion only.
I make a motion to add it to the agenda, the April 29th joint meeting.
Thank you.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Yes.
So, the request, we have, there's a proposal that is about to come forward from the Carpiato Corporation, which has a significant amount of property under option. The property known as the McGinnis Property off of Souza Road, and also the Brito Property off of Main Road, which would be the main entrance, and they have proposals for a development on that site. They're going to be coming into the planning board for a pre-application meeting. This is a site which has been highly controversial in the past, with meetings of hundreds of people. I don't know that it will still be as controversial, but it was, the request of the developer is interested in getting input from both the planning board and the council, since it would eventually evolve zoning changes. The proper procedure is to go for a pre-application meeting before the planning board, but then the council's left out in the cold. If the council meets, the planning boards left aside. What I had suggested was a joint meeting. It'll be a pre-application meeting of the planning board, but a joint meeting with the council, so that the presentation can be made in public. There's no backdoor presentation. It'll all be out in public. It will not be a public hearing. Only the planning board and the town council members will be able to ask questions, but all of the public will be able to hear what's proposed and presented before the developer goes on to the next step. And if they do, if they file a master plan request with the planning board, then it will go on to a public information meeting and follow the normal course. They had contacted us earlier. They just got back to us and to me last week. I finally spoke to their attorney, Mr. Tom Moses, on Friday. We don't have to rush it, however, we do have, April 29th is a fifth Monday of the month. It is the time you hold for workshops. We were also holding it for the second night of the Tiverton Yacht Club hearing, which now, from an item later on in the agenda, is not going forward. So my suggestion was, if it was available, and we had the planning board here, and we could poll the planning board, find out if they'd be available, if we could try to schedule that for that night. If that doesn't work, that's fine too, but at least let's get it on the radar and get something scheduled for a future date for that pre-application meeting. Comments?
Well, I just, I think as long as the application is in, precedence, I don't know what the precedence is for a combination planning board and town council pre-application meeting, because I've never heard of one before, so. But, the planning board can be polled. I don't know if all the members are here this evening to see what their availability is for the 29th.
Okay. To answer your question about the precedence, planning, joint meetings of planning boards and town councils are common in other communities. They're becoming more common here, which is good to see. The pre-application meeting isn't any kind of miraculous thing one way or the other. The advantage of a pre-application meeting is, the planning's not, board's not going to be voting on it either. You're not rendering any binding decision. It's the same thing with the town council. Give them an opportunity to see and hear what it is, and express their viewpoints without any binding characterization to it. That's what's the advantage of having that joint pre-application meeting.
We would just have to be able to meet a quorum. I don't know.
That's correct.
Right. And obviously, I mean, it's the 29th, so you can, you know, poll your members and, you know, let us know if it works.
Very good. We can do that.
We can make it. We have a quorum, right? It's all right with us, the April 29th.
Yeah. And it's a workshop scheduled night for us anyway, so it's just another night for us.
To be with each other.
But I think it would be a good idea, you know, and I think the more information we get, and to see it at the same time, so that we all have the same understanding. So I think that'll be a great thing for the council and for the planning board.
Sure.
Okay. All right, now, discussion regarding the comp plan?
Do you want to bring, do you want to bring us some of the?
Yeah, they can come up.
Bring the planning board if you want to come forward, or if you'd like to, bring a chair.
Drag some chairs up with you.
Not really joking.
Cheers. I guess we're here to talk about the process going forward with the comprehensive new plan update.
Mm-hmm.
As we discussed a few times, as we discussed a few times before, the update's due to the state November 2014, and as we found out last time, it's not a short process. So I think, I think, was it Mr. Gerlach quoted, suggested?
Yeah, I just thought it was important that we try to bring our two entities together. We know that if the deadline is November 2014, and there's a fair amount of work to be had, what should we be doing now to initiate work on this? What can we do? We know that there are potential limitations as far as not only the calendar, but also people power, for lack of a better term. I believe it's been advertised for volunteers, for the, that's kind of where I was going. We have not received, so I'm just trying to frame the, kind of, the environment here. We have not received any, no one has come forward from a volunteer perspective. From a budgeting perspective, the budget that the Budget Committee has, the docket that the Budget Committee has finalized only has $10,000 in place for potential consultant. We have limited advertising dollars attached to that as well. So I think that frames the discussion in terms of what can we do realistically between now and November 2014, and how do we address some of these shortfalls? I guess, that's my framing kind of statement here. My question is, and this is the first time I've gone through it, is realistically, how much needs to get updated in the comp plan? I mean, logically, we would go through every single subsection of that, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's not necessarily a complete rewrite.
There's some state mandated things that you need to, you need to address
Okay.
within the plan. And there are also a number of things that you want to address for the town to move forward. And I would say that, you know, first of all, you start a steering committee, and you invite all the other, members of the other boards and commissions, and you utilize them and split up the work into different elements, so that many of the elements can be worked on, can be worked on at the same time. And I think that's the only way that we're going to move forward and have a plan that we can bring to the public and vote on, and then get to the state in time. The other element that I think we have to do is look for a planning consultant to join us in this work plan, to move ahead with the comp plan.
Would you recommend that that consultant is in place before we convene a steering committee?
I think that can go hand in hand.
So in parallel?
I think we can do both at the same time.
Okay. Do we have, do we maintain a short list of potential consultants that we can?
Probably a few that know the town.
Sure.
As well as a couple of close by. I mean, Kate would have a little bit better handle than I would on that.
Would we RFP this? I don't know.
We did last time.
Okay.
And I still have all the documents from the last update, which, incidentally, the last time we started out is just doing a kind of cursory update, and we're just going to update a few things, and the whole thing was rewritten. So sometimes it takes on a life of its own.
Sure.
But I think one of the important things to do, to have a consultant on board, is to identify those things that absolutely have to be updated. You know, the state will not approve this plan unless you have these things included in the plan. I think that saves a lot of time, so you can focus on what you really have to change, and then the rest of it will kind of flow from there.
Right, right.
Last time, we had a subcommittee, a steering committee that worked on the update. Mr. Hardy was part of that.
Mr. Plonker was a major part of it.
Yep. And different delegates from, we had the school committee, we had police and fire were involved. Who else was involved? The harbor commission.
Economic Development.
Economic Development was a big part of it. I think this year, if it's possible, we'd like to get the senior center involved, because I don't think we have much in the comp plan about senior services. Anything Stafford Pond related, it's a good.
Conservation and open space. Sure. Are a good part of it.
Yep.
And then, we also, this challenge grant project is kind of dovetailed nicely, because they've already done a lot of work, and that work is pretty much ready to be incorporated into the plan once it's tweaked to fit in there. The other aspect of it, of the plan, which kind of follows at the end of the update, is updating all of the maps and the statistics, and I'm not sure how that work is going to get handled within the budgetary constraints.
Does that need to happen before we submit a final comp plan to the state?
Yes.
Okay.
The actual submission to the state is pretty time-consuming. They have forms that need to be completed for each element. We have 10 elements, and you need to do a comparison between the current plan and the submitted plan, and you have to tell them why you removed the things you removed, and why you added the things you've added. And you need to have them all listed in a, in chart form. So that process itself is pretty time-consuming.
Hypothetically, could the mapping in those elements wait to the end? I'm just thinking ahead to next year's budget?
It's going to require professional mapping services, so if it has to wait, it has to wait.
Okay.
You cannot submit to the state without, I mean, they literally give you a checklist, and you have to check off each box. If it's not there, then don't submit it, because we're not going to review it.
In the last time that we did the comp plan, how many meetings did we have? Do you remember roughly, with the steering committees and so forth?
It was pretty much weekly or bi-weekly. There were daytime meetings of the steering committee. Noel Berg was the chairman of that steering committee, and he did an enormous amount of work on it. And then Jane Wyman was the consultant, and Noel pretty much gathered all the information, and then Jane translated it all into the document. Then it went to the planning board for review. It was at the planning board, probably at least four or five meetings, I'd say maybe more than that. And then, the town council and the planning board held a joint public hearing for the public review. So altogether, I wouldn't, I have a binder with all the minutes from the meetings. I could provide that for you, but it was a lot.
And Kate, do you remember, in the last time, when did that process start?
It started in 2004, 2002. There you go.
Sorry. How much time from, the last go-around, how much time from when you kicked things off to the submission?
Four years.
Four years.
And then, three years to the state to approve it.
So we have four?
Yeah, that's a long time.
We can do it.
No.
And just so I'm clear, is there a process, let's say we do run into valid obstacles here, is there a process for working with the state to petition a later delivery of it? Is there fines?
Last year, they did, they did grant us several extensions. You have to request the extensions in writing, and we had to present them with a work plan that they approved.
Okay.
They have recently updated the statute, so Mr. Teich probably knows better than I do how flexible they are with the new statutes in place, but last time, they let us have a couple of extensions.
No, I think they're probably still going to be a little bit flexible. If they're convinced that you're moving forward with it, I think they'll provide the extensions. If they think that you're just not getting to it, then they probably won't, as a way to encourage you to get to it.
Where do we go next? I would be interested in any material that you have, to look at it from last time.
Okay.
Can we re-advertise the volunteer, the, and these?
We'll have to try and go up.
I think we might need to try to recruit on this. But those individuals, just so I'm clear, those individuals participate in the steering committee? Is that what we're trying to get volunteers for?
And I might suggest that the council might want to put the word out to these boards and commissions, and ask if they would be willing to appoint a liaison, and that way we can get things moving that way.
While we're trying to recruit for the steering committee and bring on board a consultant?
Right.
Okay. And who can we work with on the RFP for the consultant?
Well, Kate does have all the documentation from the last time we ran an RFP.
I do.
Yeah, so if I could, you know, we can get that, try to take a fresh look at rewriting that.
I do have that.
And Andy can review it, obviously.
Here.
All right.
How much money do you have for the consultant?
$10,000.
Yeah, last time, our budget was $16,000 for the planning consultant.
And I think, so, I mean, to that end, I think we know that there's probably less than what we really need there, so I think part of the process in starting to move this So I think part of the process in starting to move this forward is to realistically look at a timeframe and say, with the money we have, with the people that we have, what can we get done this fiscal year? What would need to get pushed off into next fiscal year? And then based on that, you know, probably determine fairly quickly whether or not we're going to need to petition the state for an extension. I would imagine.
I mean, I would think with a $10,000 budget, definitely, I would plan on putting the mapping off.
Until next fiscal year.
Yeah.
I don't tell you at all.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's fine. I mean, I think it's just good to have a plan of attack so that we can, you know, move forward with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How long will the mapping take, do you think?
The mapping itself doesn't take that long.
All right.
It's just we have a mapping consultant who has all our data in her database already. So it's just a matter of her creating the maps. Last time, it was a matter of a few weeks.
So realistically, we could do it next fiscal budget.
It is an expensive process.
Because we have the timeframe. Okay.
Yes, Mary Hutchinson.
So she may appear, and then you can...
Right. Yeah, she has everything in her system already. So she gives us a better price than someone who has to start fresh, but...
Okay, Ms. Epke. Before you speak, I can remind you, it's a public presentation, not a public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
So before you speak, I will allow you, but please be brief.
Thank you. Just to clarify, if the Budget Committee's budget is approved at the FTR, there's $10,000 for comprehensive planning consulting under the planning board. You also have $10,000 under professional technical services. I don't know how much of that you normally use, but maybe some of that could be used for mapping. And you do have the $10,000 for advertising and the zoning rewrite under the town clerk.
Actually, we have nothing left in professional technical right now for planning. We've gone through the budget.
So next year, probably, the same will happen.
It's... We wait... We use it to pay engineering and technical consultants, and then we wait for reimbursements from the applicants. But if we get a bunch of bills that come in, then we run dry.
Okay.
Okay. Well, obviously, there's a daunting task, you know, before all of us. I will ask if the clerk and the town administrator could send out feelers to other boards and commissions to see if they will appoint a liaison or somebody to work on this. Again, I thank you both and the entire board for the hard work you do. And I know this is just one more thing to do, and we appreciate it.
Can I just ask for comments from the planning board if anybody has any?
Absolutely. Stuart?
Yes, I'd just like to say that what we have here is a project. And projects require a couple of things. For one thing, they require a schedule. And secondly, they require a project manager. Last time, we had Noel Berg as our project manager, and he called the meetings, and he kept the trains running on time. But we really need that. And we need to determine who that person is as soon as possible. I think some of the volunteers will be more willing to participate from other committees if they know who the chair is or the project manager is. So I'm just curious, do you want to choose a project manager? Or do you want the planning board to choose one? I mean, the obvious choice is Steve Hughes, the chairman of the planning board. But we need to make that determination. And then we need to say, okay, where do we go from here? Because I don't want to be back here one year from today, and we're still talking about, we really need to update the comp plan.
Absolutely.
I think that's... Actually, I think that's a planning board decision.
Yeah, again, I was going to say, the expertise lies in your hands, not in ours. So I would expect it would be the planning board.
We could set up a steering committee, a chairman of a steering committee, and then, you know, bring in other people to that committee, and then bring in the public as well when we start to divvy it up. And once we have a list of names that we can utilize.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? From the planning board?
Oh, the copy of the most current comprehensive community plan is online for those that are interested. You may not have read it. The public as well.
Yeah, the best place to find it is on the state's website, actually, statewide planning's website. It's on the town's website, but the link often doesn't work.
Connect.
So if you go to the statewide...
The state's not here.
The statewide planning page, you'll see there's a link that says, "Approve Town Plans." And you click on that, and Tiverton's is right there in PDF form. I also have computer disks in my office if anyone needs them. They have a flash drive. They can give it to me, and I can burn it onto a flash drive for you.
Great.
I just have one other question. The RFP, though, for the consultant, would that be under the purview of us or the planning board to move that forward?
Last time, what happened is that the planning board did the interviews of the consultants and then made a recommendation to the council who made the award of the contract.
But to actually draft and execute the RFP?
That was the planning board.
That was the planning board.
Okay.
There's a lot of work ahead of us.
Absolutely. Thank you in advance.
Thank you all.
But before you go, I just... No, I just... We went quickly through the thing with the previous item with the public meeting on the 29th. I didn't know how many... I didn't realize we had this many planning board members here. Can we... And the council is ready to schedule it. So I guess I'm trying to find out if we can... And this is obviously going to be contingent on the applications. The materials have to come in right away according to the pre-application checklist. But is the 29th available to a quorum so that we can get it scheduled now?
Does the council have a petition and nothing else? Or is this going to be...
It would be strictly that from the... I mean, unless you have... I mean, if you wanted to talk about... If you had further comp plan stuff or something like that, further joint stuff between the planning board and the council, it could be. My indication was it would just be that for the planning board. The council might have other items that would come up on its workshop at that time. We were talking about it later.
I'm saying, our meeting is Tuesday. It might be... I'd like to have our... Personally, I would like to have our solicitor there as well, Mr. Jerro, because he goes through everything with us, you know.
Yeah. We know his Tuesday schedule. We don't know his Monday schedule. You know, he probably might be available because, again, it's a fifth Monday. It's an extra meeting night of the month that's not occupied. I know the second and fourth Mondays, he's occupied elsewhere.
And again, remember, it's a workshop as opposed to a voting meeting. So no votes will be taken on either side.
So... But yeah, certainly, I'll contact him and see. And I think there's a very good chance that he would be there since it's an extra Monday. So we have a quorum here, so...
Okay.
All right, so we'll schedule that on the 29th at 7:00 PM here.
Is it available here, Nancy?
Yeah, yeah, we'll schedule for us.
Oh, that's right. I keep forgetting.
Yeah, joint workshop.
And we'll schedule that, the joint part first. If there are any other council items, we'll schedule later.
No, it has to be a meeting for the planning board.
It's going to be a planning board meeting. It can be a joint workshop between the two of us. It has to be a meeting for us for it to be... Yes, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Advertise public hearings. Public hearing on fee and fines resolutions, proposed amendments pursuant to the Code of Ordinance, Section 2-1. Fees... Oh, I'm sorry, Gary Rose.
[laughing]. Gary, I saved you.
Sorry. You'll have to forgive me this evening. I'm not at 100%. Recre's, Chair of the Recreation Committee, council update.
Hi, Gary.
I have with me tonight Bobby Martin and Debbie Ibbitt going to assist me on the update. We have nine facilities in town, as you're all aware of. Two of those are beaches, and the other seven are different types of activities that take place from soccer to baseball to skate park, which Bobby was very instrumental in getting put together. Small children's playgrounds, baseball fields, lots of activities. And I think if you drive by them, you'll see that they're pretty well-used and maintained to the best of our ability. I'm going to ask Bobby, he's going to give an update on each facility one at a time. And certainly, if Deb and I have anything, we'll comment on that as well.
What we've done is come up with a very rough draft of what's going on. And I'll start with Bayview. An act has committed $500 towards some railroad ties so that we can put them around the swing sets. Then we can fill them in with sand, and they'll be usable. They'll be painted, and it'll make it look a heck of a lot better. We're also going to put new nets on the basketball hoops so that that'll be playable. We have also applied for 500... I'm sorry, $50,000 of CDBG money. Hopefully, we'll get something, and we can put some playground equipment in there.
If I can just interject for a second. That Bayview facility, we really have not done nothing there for the last 10 years because of the situation surrounding that facility. So this is really the first year that we've actually tried to make some improvements. Certainly, we're very hopeful that CDBG can help us out. But obviously, that facility is in dire need of a lot of repair.
The next one will be back to Bogomash. We're hoping, or at least we, in the commission, are hoping to put in a gazebo this year. We're fundraising. We're still looking for more money. We're also in the process of putting in an obstacle course. We did get a grant for that course, and that's going to be going in hopefully very shortly.
Before you go, can you explain what the obstacle course is going to be?
We've actually got a $10,000 grant from, was it Bank Newport?
No, 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 Newport Hospital.
Newport Hospital, excuse me. And basically, it's a small obstacle course which consists of different types of challenges for the participant to overcome. And again, it's not a situation where we're going to have training for the United States Marines. It's going to be something that's relatively easy and safe.
Then we have the beaches. Gornell's, just normal maintenance, the picnic tables, as you see, probably paint the building. Fogland is going through some major renovations as we speak. They're rebuilding the sand dunes. We are also going to be moving the playground. We got permission from CRM-C to move the playground across the street to the south side of the bathhouse. So that'll be a tremendous improvement there.
I'd like to thank Mr. Belucci and his crew at the DPW for their assistance on that.
Fort Barton, right down the street here, is in pretty good shape. There's nothing major going to go on there. Little League now, for your information, has a fund that they put X amount of dollars in per year from the banners that they display to redo their concession stands, which are desperately needed. They're all rotted. That hopefully will happen in the very near future. All the fields, all the fields, need fencing desperately. I don't care what field you go to, you'll see that it needs fencing. Bogomash happens to look pretty good, but if you look at the outfield fence, it needs to be replaced also. But they're really, really bad. We need to look for some serious money there. Town Farm. There isn't much that doesn't need to be revamped at Town Farm. However, we are looking for volunteers who will be willing to take on a project. And what I mean by that is someone that can come up and say, hey, I'll try to do something with the tennis courts. Let me see if I can do some fundraising for that. Or I'll do something with the playgrounds. Let me see what I can come up with for grants or write grants for the playgrounds. We're looking for that.
Yeah, those two parts of that facility are in dire need of repair. We're real close to having to close those tennis courts because of the cracks. The fencing is in... I think one side we did repair.
And it blew.
And it's already starting to, yeah, waver. And there's the north side of that fence is, at any time, could come down. The small children's playground is about 20 years old, Deb?
Dedicated, it was a typo playground. Tiverton Parent Youth Organization got together to do fundraising, and I believe they had a work crew to pick that up. That was no cost to the town other than the gravel and framing it in. The wood is checked. It's not allowed anymore in playgrounds. It is not up to code. The company that built it was a youth playground company out of Canada. About five years after, it was stalled. They went under. So it was no way we could actually replace anything, item for item. It does need to be leveled and redone and need all the codes. We are in touch frequently with the playground group at the local trust, which held a seminar some years ago, which three of us had attended. The regs keep changing every few years, so we keep up on them till we're ready.
Once you touch them, you have to remove them.
Yeah.
And that's a problem. Then you've got nothing there.
Right.
And yes, Mr. Lambert, I know you get complaints, but we're not looking for complainers. We're looking for volunteers.
No, no.
Complaints are a problem with us.
Bob, I asked for this presentation, but I specifically told you I've never had a complaint. What we've had is a lot of compliments about the development along Bogomash Road. And a number of people have asked me, and I think it's a reasonable inquiry, gee, when are you planning to do that at our local playground? Or, you know...
I asked them.
Well, what I was hoping to get, and I think that that's the direction we're going, I'd like... I wanted to make sure I could identify all of the playgrounds. I didn't know we had nine, including the two beaches. I wanted to get some idea as to what the status is. And I think what I was going to suggest at some point, when you're finished with your presentation, is while there may be issues at some of these playgrounds, give us your sense of what the priorities are, and then give us some workable plan, as well as, you know, identify the problems. That's all well and fine, but we need some input. I don't have children anymore that go to playgrounds, so I've lost touch with that. But let me know what we do need out there, what the other members of the town council...
I would applaud that. I think that that's something that we can put together for you, an action list of priority items. Because, you know, there is... We do have nice facilities in town. They are in need of maintenance and repair. And they're all in various degrees of disrepair and need of maintenance.
And I told Bob, I said, call it a wish list.
Be involved with the town for over 20 years, I know what that is.
As long as you identify what you're looking for, and you come up with a plan that's going to... that we can work with.
Another major project that we're working on and desperately looking for volunteers is for the recreational facilities that's going to be put in up near the New Ranger School. Some people have referred to them as a soccer complex. Well, we don't know that it's going to be strictly soccer. It's going to be a recreation. It's going to be under recreation. It'll be a facility. We have just recently made some arrangements so that we will have some septic facilities there. And the pipe will be ready for when we're ready, by way of the school department. Because they're putting in their new field. And part of that, we did some... We made an agreement that they were going to have a pipe setting there, ready for us whenever we get a concession stand, hopefully. That's where we're at.
The only other thought that I would have, and I've made this comment to Bob, is that it's all well and fine to look at this as volunteer work. But in most municipalities, this would be what you call a recreational department that has actual employees. And I think as a community, we do have some obligation, even though you may not be quote-unquote "some legal entity" with employees, that as a town council and as a town, we do have some obligation to provide decent recreational facilities for the kids.
I agree. It's not only children that are using our facilities with our walking tracks that we have and even the skate park. You'll find that there's a lot of adults that are using those facilities as well. I mean, you really need to just drive by any one of those facilities on a nice spring day. Like tomorrow would probably be a good time to do that. And you'll see that those facilities are chock full. And there's a lot of people that are using those facilities. You know, as well as a lot of our youth organizations, such as Little League Baseball, Tiverton Youth Soccer, Basketball. There's a lot of facilities, a lot of youth organizations that are using recreational facilities. So I would applaud that. I'd welcome the opportunity to... Our meetings are the second Tuesday of every month. Certainly, we'd love to have any council member or any member of the community which would like to come in and possibly, you know, offer any assistance that they may be able to offer. We would welcome that.
I would just want to echo, you know, Mr. Lambert, you said that you didn't have... You know, your kids are not young enough to be using these. You know, I have three young children, and we use these facilities constantly, you know. And whether it's through Little League or soccer... know, and whether it's through Little League or soccer or otherwise. And I just wanna, I wanna do two things. I wanna recognize the efforts of the entire Recreation Committee. It probably goes, you know, sight unseen sometimes, and I just wanna make sure that we recognize them. I did have the good fortune of participating the last couple Fridays in some onsite meetings down at Town Farm there. All good. With some representatives of Tiverton Youth Soccer, and while we're, you know, focused a lot on physical structures here, don't wanna lose sight of the grounds and the upkeep of the grounds here. These fields in particular, at Town Farm, and we spent a lot of time down on Lower Field, are used constantly with very little break during the year to recoup. And so, you know, it's important that, for folks to realize that these fields will take a hit when certain line items in the budget are not necessarily included, i.e. fertilizer, you know, something as basic as that. And so, you know, we're trying to figure out how we scrape together some fertilizer to keep the soccer field in a workable shape. So, you know, I just, I think it's important, I do think it's an investment, you know, you see families, young, old, everyone in between, using these, these places, and it really does add a significant amount to the quality of life of this community. And so they should be invested in, to be maintained and expanded, you know, wherever possible.
Thank you. And, you know, we, as a town, we really don't have a lot of activities for teenagers to participate in. I think what we've tried to do as a Recreation Committee is to be more diverse, rather than to just focus on one particular type of activity. We've tried to create a skate park, we've created walking tracks, we've created small children's playgrounds, you know, to go along with our soccer field and baseball fields that we have. So I think that it is something that is important to the community to keep children, to give them something to do, a place to go, a safe place where they can go.
And how many vacancies currently?
We actually have one vacancy right now on our commission, so.
Yeah, which will be clear up. I just wanna echo, you know, the, the hard work that you, your commission does, and I know Bobby does. And I think it's recognized throughout the town, because there isn't anybody in town that won't tell you about Bogamash every time they turn their eye. So, and, and that's only indicative of most of the playgrounds in town. You know, some are better than others because of lack of funding to, to update them, but I think the care that goes into taking care of each and every one of those shows, and it's well appreciated. And anybody out there, I, I beseech you to contact the Recreation Committee, become a volunteer, see what we can do to make these better for everyone in town, because like, like I said, they're not just for the little kids, they're for everybody in town to utilize. Anything else?
Can I just add a comment?
Yep.
Last year, we submitted two grants to DEM, one of which was for the, the, I don't know what you wanna call it, I'm still gonna call it a soccer complex, you know, Scott River Bridge will always be the Scott River Bridge. So we did submit two requests for funding, one for the Town Farm and one for the soccer complex. Unfortunately, we didn't receive any funding, but we will try again. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some next round.
Just keep swinging.
That's right.
On the, on the gazebo, do you expect to have a gazebo by?
Hopefully, yes.
End of the fiscal year?
We're hoping they have that. We've actually, believe me, we've already, we're already having plans on what some of the, some activities that we wanna have at that gazebo, so.
Why do you ask that?
Because we can't carry forward money to the next fiscal year.
Any money that's in that fund can go forward, it does go forward automatically, if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, like the, the money that's in there is locked in there, and that gets carried forward.
Yeah, that's separate from our regular budget.
Okay.
Restricted account.
Don't let me sweat like that.
I just started sweating.
We've got, we, I'm waiting for the treasurer, actually. She's gonna give me an updated report of exactly how much we got in there. We need about, between 30, 35,000 for that. It's a pretty good size.
For the gazebo?
Gazebo, yes.
Okay.
About 22, I think. So, not too far away. We'll get it.
Hey, Gary, anything else?
Any, any, any council members have any questions?
No, we're just gonna get that list of priorities, right?
Yes. What we'll do is we'll work on that on our next meeting, I'll put that on our agenda, and we'll come up with a priority list, and then I'll submit that to, to you, Mr. Roderick? Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Now, we'll go to advertise public hearing on fees and fines resolutions, proposed amendments pursuant to Code of Ordinance, Section 2-1, fees and fines, beach admission fees. Anybody from the Beach Commission?
I was like, okay.
Here we go, here we go, yes, we can do this. I have been in receipt of a memo dated 1/13, I believe 2013, and I believe this is a typo on this. First of all, you have to understand how our beaches go. When we look at the beach, I realize you did it by the town fiscal year, we do it by the beach season. When we open Memorial Day, when we close out Labor Day. I have the numbers for you, that you had the 9,035 on yours from Grinnell's. Your Fogland, it's 13,300 v. the 12,300 that you have here. But if we add in May and June, which is when a lot of season passes are sold.
Right.
Unfortunately, this particular document that I received does not have that. There's $75 a season. I don't care if it rains or snows, that is money in the bank for this town. The vast majority of those passes are sold at Fogland Beach. That is why Fogland has the greater income from year to year. Bread and butter comes from Grinnell's Beach. Those are your, some residents, not as many as Fogland, do go to Grinnell's. A lot of your out-of-state residents are going and paying that $5 fee. And when I looked back at May and June of 2012, we had $4,250 that was added to Grinnell's account, and $6,015 was added to Fogland. So the total income from those beaches for that calendar year was $32,600. Our personnel budget to run those beaches was $33,000, and we have money left over to open those beaches come May. So they're basically paying for themselves. This was a fantastic season. I don't expect to see a season this good for a while. We were closed because of water quality testing for half a day, I think we lost maybe one rain day whole season. So I think we did fantastically well, as far as staying in the budget, and Denise also did take money back into the general fund or wherever else it was needed, a couple thousand, and left us with a balance of about a thousand after the other fiscal year was closed out. So I think we're doing pretty good. I did look at your concern as far as raising the out-of-town beach rate, Mr. Grot, for the, up to $10. We are currently $5 for non-residents. I understand what you looked at, but I spent a lot of time at Surf Beaches on the island. We cannot compare Fogland or Grinnell's to Newport, Middletown, Portsmouth, Third Beach, or any of those beaches. I looked at the state as a whole, which I can give you those papers, which are at the end of the rest of the stuff that you're using, you spend trying to do all that work. This is the state beaches from 2010. They may change, but you're putting us on a par with all the beaches on the other side of the bridges. Scarborough, Mary Hansen, they're charging $10 during the week for non-residents. If it is the council's wish to do that, all well and good, I believe we voted or we discussed, because we don't have the minutes available, at our February meeting, to sort of leave things as they are for the upcoming season. I feel what's gonna happen is we may lose the day traffic at the $10 and not recoup it. The other thing I looked into is the season passes down at Horse Neck Beach are like 35 and 45 for resident and non-resident. So some of those people, we may lose them to Horse Neck, we may not, I'm not exactly sure. I think part of that answers why you see a lot of out-of-state plates down at Fogland. The other part of that is, the boat ramp there is a state boat ramp. We cannot charge anyone who uses that boat ramp. Just can't do it. I do understand your concern about the trash. It's very hard to police Fogland Beach. We know people have brought their trash and dropped them at the beaches, they've done the same thing down at Town Farm, and they were local residents, because we found out who was dumping trash down there a few years ago. Grinnell's, maybe two years ago, we had the police lock the gate at Sunset, and then the girls would open, or the boys, in the morning when they were coming on for duty, about 10 and 9 in the morning. I would not have a problem revisiting that and locking that gate. Part of what happens is, there's a group of fishermen, 99% of them are wonderful, but you'll get a one, the one or two that does not pick up after themselves, there's fish hooks left, there's heads of fish left there, anybody who's ever gone there at certain times of the day, you're gonna see a mess. After our beach cleaner had come after, Bobby Martin had taken all the trash about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I took a white trash bag and got another bag of trash. It's not necessary, but we can't legislate meat. That's the problem. But I think the commission in general can talk about, do we wanna talk to the police and see if they can lock that gate for us in the evening? And that may help, because when you gotta lug stuff with you, maybe you won't have a case of beer bottles sitting there left the next morning, and maybe those beer bottles won't get thrown against the rocks and smashed either. But that's just the input that I was able to obtain for you on, you know, the notice that I had that this was going to be a question coming up. And basically, I did give you the background where the numbers came from that I quoted, so that if you ever wanna refresh your mind, you have them all, sir.
Just to kinda add to what, you know, Debbie did, a nice job putting it all together, but we also did have an increase, I believe, two years ago, where we increased the yearly rate from $50 to 75. And so, we have had a, we did recently have an increase to, I, I think it, you know, not to say that we're not gonna look at this annually, I think that this year we ought to remain with the same rates that we had, and we kinda discussed that as a group, and that was, was the recommendation that we had for the council.
At one time in the past, too, we did have a rate for resident passes. It was very low, it was maybe $5 at the most. When the tax rate started swinging, we decided to change it, and now we're sort of locked in, because if you look at any of the fees, Newport resident 40, non-resident 80, once you start charging a resident, you cannot charge a non-resident any more than twice. So we would be going up to over 35 for a resident to get the 75. You know, it's, it's a lot of trade-offs when it comes to what we're dealing with as far as fees, and do we lose people going to the 10? Don't know. Do we do what Portsmouth does? Mid-August, they close their beaches, they're only open on Saturday, Sunday for the last two weeks. We've got a school calendar that's changed drastically this coming year. That may impact us, going back earlier, staying in later, we may not open for an extra week that we had open last year. There's a lot we can look at as far as budgetary constraints, to, you know, obviously try to help out. We stay within our budget, but, you know, we know there's other things going on in town.
Okay. You know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm in full agreement. You're the ones who know best on the beaches, what, you know, what the traffic will bear. And, and I think that we have nice beaches, but we are in competition with tons of beaches all around us. And I think that anything that's going to deter people from coming to our beaches might be more detrimental, you know, especially if you're going to raise fees, you know? The economy in Rhode Island still hasn't turned around regardless of what they're saying everywhere else, and with the foreboding of tolls coming along, that may even have a greater impact. So, you know, I think that, it's my opinion that the fees remain the same, but it would be the, up to the wish of the council.
I just wanna thank you for the due diligence there. I think when I started this, it was to initiate a discussion and dialogue on it, and that's absolutely what happened. You certainly have a tremendous, much more of a historical perspective on things, and so.
You've got 21 years' experience, and you're the newbie, so time is what it takes.
Sure, yeah, yeah. 21 years ago, I was probably running around one of those beaches, but in any case, I will, you know, I will agree with your assessment here, and I'll support Mr. Roderick in terms of keeping the fees where they are. That would be my recommendation.
All right, well, then I will entertain a motion as such.
So moved. Maintain the fees currently in place.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor.
Opposed.
The fees remain the same.
Print the tickets.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your hard work, greatly appreciated. Town Council, sitting as a Board of Licensing. Charles Mulcahy, 65 Beach Avenue, Tiverton, requests approval for annual renewal of private detective license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Mulcahy here? Nope, chief?
Mr. Mulcahy meets all the qualifications, his background checks, both BCI and local.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for approval of an annual renewal of private detective license for Charles Mulcahy, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Continuing, sitting as a Board of Licensing, Primrose Bakery, 115 Stafford Road, Tiverton, requests approval of late annual renewal of vitruling license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
I'm serious.
Okay. Late fee because it's like, okay. Okay. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for late annual renewal of a vitruling license for Primrose Bakery, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Opposed, the motion carries. Okay. Closed as a Board of Licensing now. Appointments and resignations. Arts Committee, three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. We have Wanda C. Longshaw, 24 Chester Street. Is Wanda here?
No. President, I did actually receive quite a few notices from, some that would not be able to attend, maybe they attended in the past, and we just request they come. And like John Cristo, they have a meeting tonight. Summit was a conflicting meeting on different boards, some were unable to attend. But this is actually Group A that has been advertised. Now, we're gonna have to go back to anybody that didn't send us in a response and try to reconsider reappointments on these.
I make a motion to reappoint Wanda Longshaw to the Arts Committee for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Okay. Cemetery Commission, three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. John S. Cristo, 48 Kennebec Street.
He's not here tonight.
I know, yep.
I will make a motion to reappoint John Cristo to the Cemetery Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Historic Cemetery Commission, three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. Ann Carey Bailey, 27 Sloop Lane.
I make a motion to reappoint Ann Carey Bailey to the Historical Cemetery Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor. Motion carries. Open Space Commission, three-year term expiring April 15, 2016. Gary Plunkett, 266 Indian Point Road. And there are two, are there two?
There's two.
Are there two positions?
There are two positions? Nancy? Yes. Okay, and Brian James, 286 C. Powatt Avenue. And Brian James, 286 C. Powatt Avenue. Gary, I don't know if you want to come up. We know you, Gary. We appreciate the work you do.
I'll make a...
Brian here?
Brian, yes, he's in the lab.
Wave, Brian. Good, thanks, Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of both Gary Plunkett and Brian James to the Open Spaces Commission for a three-year term expiring April 15, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Street Advisory Committee, two-year term expiring April 15, 2014. Audrey Glotti, 195 Crandall Road.
Mr. President, she's asked that that be continued to the next meeting. She will be at that meeting. Because I don't think anyone's really met her yet.
Okay. We'll move that to the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, Waste Water Management Commission, three-year terms expiring April 15, 2016.
I make a motion to reappoint John Cristo and Christopher Neerpass to Waste Water Management Commission for three-year terms expiring April 15, 2016.
Second.
Before we vote, I just have a quick question from the town solicitor. Is that an issue?
Can he serve on both?
I believe so. There are certain ones that you can't, such as canvassing, you can serve on nothing else and so forth. But I don't believe that there's a restriction between those two. There's a Waste Water Management, let me check my chart.
Just want to be sure.
Is he currently...
Yes, he's currently on board.
No, then it's a non-issue. Let's see.
I don't think there's a conflict.
So, we can't go by that.
Okay.
Nancy says there's a conflict, and there's not a conflict.
And I believe everything the town clerk says.
Yeah, go ahead.
At least not several, I think we've been through this before.
Okay.
We can't remember one or both if we have.
Cemetery.
Cemetery.
No, there's nothing that prohibits someone from serving on both.
Great, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Bush Carey, I want to thank each and every one of them for their continued dedication and hard work for the town of Tiverton. Resignations. Recycling Landfill Committee, Deborah Dupont, 359 Hooper Street. I would like to extend our thanks for her hard service on the Recycling Landfill Committee, and I asked the town clerk to send her a letter thanking her for her time. I'll entertain a...
So you see, you're getting the same people.
Yeah, yeah. So, there is an opening on the Recycling Landfill Committee out there in TV land and out here in the audience, so if you're interested, please come forward. Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation with regret.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor. Motion carries, thank you. Unfinished business. Town Administrator, approval of advertising and job description for position of Town Planner.
We have made modifications, and it's been reviewed by the town solicitor. You have a copy with the changes that were implemented in the job description, as well as the advertisement. We took the suggestions of council members that submitted them, incorporated them, and now we're ready for approval. Obviously, we're all aware of the fact that funding is an issue for the position.
But we did get some funding. The budget committee did...
We've got $20,000 for it.
Well, they reconsidered, and they did. For a Town Planner. They reconsidered on Saturday at a meeting, which I want to thank them for that.
I mean, obviously, it's something that I think that we're going to have to really look into. I think at this time, until we figure out what the total funding will or may be in that particular line item, that we hold off on advertising for a Town Planner at this time.
I would ask that, at this point, you at least approve, you know, we can hold off on the advertising, but at least approve the advertisement and the job description.
Mr. Teich, you looked at this?
Yes, I looked at it, and...
I made the changes based on Mr. Pelletier's comments from the last meeting, as well as a couple of tweaks of my own.
I think you have both a redlined copy and a clean copy there.
Yep. I will entertain a motion to approve the advertising description for a Town Planner, but not to actually go forward with the advertising.
Well, I'll move that we approve the job description for the position of Town Planner.
Second.
Yeah.
A motion and a second? You have a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, second. Okay, all those in favor?
Opposed.
Motion passes. And then, again, just to keep the council open, that we'll continue to look at this item as we go forward, depending on funding and so forth, when it would be wise to actually advertise for the position. Obviously, with the comprehensive plan coming up, there are other issues that we need to look at. So, it's something that we're really going to have to take a long, hard look. Okay. Town Administrator, update on drainage issue at Pecassett School and request to a bidding procedure.
We've had a couple of meetings regarding the drainage issue, and we've had them at the school, the last one of which was this afternoon. I've had discussions with the school department, and they, through their school committee, have agreed to split the $14,000, roughly $14,000 estimate that we have. As a result, this afternoon, and by the way, they've also asked the school committee to waive the bidding process, as we are asking here, or as I am asking here. And what we're going to do is, we're going to have Mr. Rose, Clement Rose, do some test pits to make sure that we don't hit ledge. And if we don't hit ledge, then we will continue with the project. If we do hit ledge, we're probably going to have to regroup and discuss what alternatives we wish to take. So, the request here is to waive the bidding process, should we be able to go forward.
Steve here? Steve? Hi.
How you doing?
Why don't you give us your expert evaluation?
It's not brain surgery. It's a puddle. There's a few ways of getting rid of it. We looked at today of digging test pits, because we really have to know what's under the ground before we can determine the course of action. It's been there for a year. It does flood the road. I don't think it's a threat of anybody drowning in it. Right now, it's dry. And soon as we finish rebuilding Fogland Beach, we'll go make it work, all right? I mean, we'll get it done based on what we find the existing conditions. Either underground piping, an overground sluice way, or maybe a, I call it a leachin' basin, or just trying to get the water to go into the ground by building a big drywell is another word for it. We'll have to open it up to find out what we've got to deal with, and then have a quick meeting and decide. But obviously, I want, you know, where the other $70,000 is coming from, I assume it's coming out of my budget. So I'm going to watch to make sure we can do the best job at the cheapest price and solve the problem.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks for the seven, seven grand.
I'm not sure I understood everything there, Steve.
Okay.
Is the proposal to do an underground piping, that would be your first step, if you can do it?
If we could do it, yeah, that's the most expensive way. But let's, you know, if we can do it, that'll probably be the easiest way done and gone. Most expensive, but we've got to see if we can do it first.
Yeah, it's just the test pits will let us know whether or not there's ledge under there.
We can do it that way, we can get the water out. That's all I'm guaranteeing.
And the proposed cost, just so I understand this, for the underground piping would be the $14,250, and that would be eventually completed by Clement Rose?
That would be if you vote for it, and that doesn't include ledge. That's what I'm worrying about, because you'll triple the cost like that.
Well, I think after the test pits are done, if there's ledge, then we'll have to look at whether or not we go that route.
Right, and we'll try to figure another way. It can be done, that's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
And my request is to waive the bidding process, because it's in excess of $2,500.
Right. The only thing is that...
Steve is recommending against this proposal, correct?
Well, no, he's just saying it's the most expensive.
Right. And he's saying he could do it.
Well, not an underground pipe.
Right.
My only concern is that before, I'm all for, I will ask for a motion to waive the bidding process, but I don't want to go forward until we know whether or not there's ledge there.
Oh, of course, we won't.
Excuse me.
We're going to re-meet after we dig the test pits and see what we have.
Because that will decide which way we go.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Teich?
Yes, I would just suggest that you're not waive the bid process with an open-ended item, but if you're waiving it with some sort of cap on what the cost would be, so that way you're making clear about that it's coming back to you beyond that.
Yeah.
The $14,250.
Okay, right, right. Okay. Any discussion from the council?
Yes, I was at the meeting this afternoon, and I was involved in the discussion between Mr. Bucci, Mr. Rose, school department, and Mr. Gonsalo. And I would be an advocate of fixing the problem in a permanent nature. And although it may be more expensive, as the bid might indicate, they're doing something above ground, it would, in my view, and based on the conversation I had today, I think it would be closer to a permanent fix, and also divert water away from the lower field. So, I also could have two possible solutions to this. One is alleviating the water. I believe Mr. Odell was giving some photographs, if you haven't seen or have an idea of what the water collection is.
Give it to Nancy first.
He was given the photographs by the superintendent, and I'm not sure how recent they were taken, but when you see the extent of the water, you've got an idea of how severe the issue is. It literally can be over a foot deep near the back corner, and it goes all the way up to the building, almost up and up the road. It gets, it's very deep. And I was, when I first saw it myself, I was pretty alarmed at what I saw, and how bad the water collection is. So, I'd be of the mindset that if we do have to spend a little extra money and never have to worry about it again, then that would be my take on the situation. I'd also add that if we, the cost of doing nothing will outweigh the cost of the solution today.
Yeah.
Carrie?
While the Recreation Committee does agree that, you know, obviously, the problem needs to be taken care of, the only thing we'd like to make sure that the council is cognizant of is that we do have youth organizations using those fields right at this present moment. So, as you're doing this construction, do we feel as though there's going to be any interruption on the fields during this construction time or testing period? And if so, or if not, I should say, we need to make sure that it's clearly marked, that there's a hazard in a particular situation, so that we can keep people away from any problems that may occur, and hopefully that, you know, if there is holes or trenches that need to be dug, that they can be done in an expeditious manner, so that it's not to interrupt some of the activities that we do have going on in the field. The other thing I'd like to make the council aware of is that there is a utility line that goes through that field that runs power to the concession stand. We probably need to make sure we clearly mark that.
Yeah, we'll have to get dig-safe, obviously.
Yeah, and obviously, we just want to make sure that that, from what I've seen, from what I understand, that all the holes in the test pits will be dug away from the playing surface, playing fields that we have. But again, like I said, I just want to make sure that they're clearly marked as a hazard.
Okay, thank you.
I think that we'll make sure that that certainly happens, but any construction will be along the south side, away from the field. You know, it'll be behind the upper concession stand. It'll all be as close to the boundary as possible.
Right. What usually happens, though, Jim, is there's a lot of foot traffic that occurs while the games are going on, and that's pretty much the avenue that the pedestrians use or people use, that the foot traffic that's going on while the games are going on, because we try to keep people off the fields so that they don't get struck by a ball. So, we still need to make sure that we have an adequate path for those people to be able to walk back and forth while the construction's going on and while the games are going on.
Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Steve?
I just wanted to put your mind at ease that the plan at this time for digging these test holes is to basically dig the holes, make notes on each hole, and then backfill them immediately, so that it does not impact safety on children or people in that area. The plan is to have them all dug and all backfilled the same time, same day.
Oh, good. Thanks.
I'll be very quick, Mr. Adams. Just thank you, everyone, for getting together and working this problem out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Very quick.
She wants to hear it.
Thank you, Sal. Okay, is there anything else from the council?
Needing a motion.
Okay, I will entertain a motion that we waive the bidding process with a cap of $14,250.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
A second?
Can we amend it to also include pending the results of the test pits?
The ledge testing.
Well, yeah, the ledge testing would only make it go above the $14,250.
Is that what you...
That's, am I correct, Steve?
What was that again?
If they found ledge, it would go over the $14,250, right? So this way, we put a cap, so if it goes over, if it comes in over $14,200, then there is no, yeah, then it has to come back, and we'll have to figure out what we're going to do. So, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Opposed, the motion carries. Okay, unfinished business. Excuse me. Tiverton Yacht Club, request to withdraw without prejudice prior request to amend zoning ordinance. Article 6, other district regulations, opinion from Tiverton Conservation Commission.
Good evening. Ken Tremblay, my client of Tiverton Yacht Club, in the east.
When we put this request on the council agenda, the council, because the planning board had conflicts, suggested...
With that in mind, we thought it would be premature not to take the advice that was gonna be given to you and proceed forward with a hearing. So we're asking you to allow us to withdraw our petition, and that once we work with the Conservation Commission, uh, to come back to this board with a, with revised, uh, request.
Okay, it's within your purview to remove your request.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sitting as the rear commander of the yacht club.
Ah, okay.
Did you say rear?
Vice commander, I'm sorry, I'm the vice commander. I used to be.
Andy?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments, just...
Okay, then seeing none, I don't believe there's any action we need to take.
Um, I, I think you, yeah, I do think you should have a, a motion allowing the withdrawal. They've asked for without prejudice and which would allow them to come back at any time, um, so you should, should have a motion to, uh, allow that withdrawal.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I move that we grant the request to withdraw without prejudice, a prior request to amend the zoning ordinance, Article six, other district regulations, as fully set forth in attachment E three to the agenda.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Excuse me, I haven't seen Councilman Gillock in years, but if Syracuse had won Saturday night, this meeting would be over now.
Go orange. Financial business. Proposed budget for year 2013-14. A town council resolution for docket regarding sale of town-held properties. Take these one at a time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, um, a resolution which I had prepared. There was an, uh, agenda item, uh, previously on the financial town meeting which authorized the sale of, um, townhold prop, property, but it had a sunset provision which basically would be May of 2013, um, and so this would, uh, go on, it would, um, eliminate the particular timing, um, requirement that was there previously, but it would maintain the requirement that had been added there before about on the floor, uh, provided that any such transfer is not less than fair market value. And obviously, it's up to you to decide what you wanna do, but I, uh, we do, we do have one property, Nonquid School, currently, um, under contract, um, which may or may not close before the deadline, obviously would have to, um, and the other properties as well, if the town wanted to take any action. Absent this resolution, you'd have to have a special, uh, financial town referendum in order to sell the property.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which in some cases might cost more than the property would bring.
Yeah. Any, any discussion from the council? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion, uh, regarding the resolution for the, uh, sale of town-held properties. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Post, the motion carries. Okay, continuing on to financial business. Possible town council resolutions for the docket. Okay. Any resolutions from the council?
Just, just so I'm clear, uh, are we looking for possible, uh, wh, I'm sorry, could you explain?
Okay, I, I, go ahead.
Just, just so I'm clear.
Well, well, timing-wise, I mean, you've got time constraints. If you, if you want to propose resolutions for the docket, um, for example, the car, the, the resolution, there's a resolution that's been passed which prohibits carry-forwards. If you wanted to change that and have an alternate resolution, now would be the time. It's basically just to give you that opportunity, um, this is kinda like your last chance to propose resolutions for this year that would affect, such as the selling of town hold property or impacting and changing previous resolutions of the financial town meeting or the financial town referendum.
Do, do, and tell me if this is not the form, but we did talk about potentially establishing, um, a, uh, gee, I'm sorry, uh, a capital improvement type fund. Is, is that, would we, do, does that fit in here, is that a separate discussion?
It would normally fit in here, but we don't have any funding to establish.
Right, it would have to, have to come under the budget first. It has to be budgeted first, and then there's a resolution...
Resolution that it'd only been spent...
That can only be spent for that.
Okay, so you can't come at it the other way around, establish, and then...
You can't create a budget line item without having a budget line item.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, then I believe that we don't have any possible council resolutions for the docket at this point. All right, last, possible optional budget by the town council. Okay, um, I, I will go first and just give my brief remarks regarding this. Uh, obviously, you know, we've met with the Budget Committee, um, we went in a hundred percent agreement as far as some items. Uh, I think the council in general fully expected our budget to be reduced. That was not a surprise. Were we happy with some of the changes? No. But I think that this council realizes that the Budget Committee, uh, has the town's best interest at heart, just as we believe we have the town's best interest at heart. Um, I think the biggest stumbling block was the, the planning position. Uh, they did acquiesce and put some money in there for being be a part-time planner. Uh, in the future, we may be able to move some funds around and get a full-time planner in for the next fiscal year, but I think that's something that we'll have to look at. Um, and again, I think anytime in the budget process, no one is completely happy and gets completely what they want. And speaking only for myself personally, I think that we, as a council, uh, and the Budget Committee have made great steps to end divisiveness in this town. And I, my personal opinion is that submitting a, a council budget would only add to division in this town, and that's one thing I don't want. I think that, that in small steps, we're working together, and we need to continue that process. Uh, are we a hundred percent happy? No. Is the Budget Committee a hundred percent happy? I'm sure no. But I think it's a step, and we have to learn to compromise and work together for the benefit of the town. Uh, I think going forward, this council probably met more times on the budget than previous councils, and in the next go-around, I can guarantee you that we'll probably meet even more. Um, but again, I, I think that at this point in time, is, is it a budget that we can work with? Yes. Is it a budget that, that I like one hundred percent? No. But I think that, uh, it's, it's a start, and we all have to keep in mind that both sides are trying to do what's best for the town, and that is only my personal opinion. Yeah, anyone else?
Yeah, I, just briefly, uh, I'm gonna adopt, uh, Ed's, uh, comments, and perhaps I was even a little bit more perturbed, uh, by some of the items in the budget. Uh, for example, I think that as a town council, we made a policy decision that the town should have a planner, or at least we should advertise and fund for a planner. I don't believe really that it's in the purview of a Budget Committee to second-guess the town council on an item like that. And there are any number of items similar to that that I could go through. So my plan initially was, I had no plan to submit an optional budget, other than perhaps a plan to submit an optional budget as the town administrators recommend, recommended budget, and I've considered the possibility of abstaining. Uh, but after giving it some thought, I, I too agree with, uh, Ed, uh, that, uh, we're trying to work together, and I think the, uh, the best approach is to make it clear, and I think I've made it clear with a number of items in this budget, that I simply don't agree with. Uh, but that said, we can have differences of opinion, and with that said, uh, I will in fact, uh, approve the, approve the budget.
I would like to thank the Budget Committee, because I think they did listen to us regarding the planner, and they did reconsider, and although they didn't give us the full amount, um, I think they compromised with us and gave us, um, a part-time planner. So I do wanna thank them, because I think in that issue, you did listen, it did get a little volatile, and, but I think we compromised, and I wanna thank you for that.
The, the only thing I would like to add, and I echo everyone's sentiments who spoke before me, is that perhaps there's an opportunity that, uh, once the financial, uh, town referendum is, uh, complete and over with, that we take some time to review with the Budget Committee what worked well, um, and what we could do to, uh, improve the process next year, uh, 'cause I do agree with Mr. Roderick that, uh, we are taking steps to, uh, to work in a more collaborative fashion, uh, and we should try to take these lessons learned, uh, and apply them towards next year.
Now, it's Saturdays, meeting the chairman, Dave, um, mentioned that we should get together in August and start discussing.
Oh, great.
So I thought that was a very good idea, and I wanna thank Dave for suggesting that.
Having attended many of the Budget Committee meetings, um, they did their due diligence, uh, they did compromise on certain items and put the needs of the town and the pay, the taxpayers, um, kept those, the taxpayers in mind. They did their job. Uh, I fully support the, um, recommendation of the Budget Committee for the, uh, for the fiscal year, uh, budget. Thank you.
Anything else? And again, I, I wanna thank the council and the Budget Committee for all the hard work they put in. Um, there were many, uh, discussions on our side, uh, and many on the Budget Committee's side, and, uh, though it wasn't one hundred percent, like I said, what either one of us really wanted, uh, I think bottom line, it's, it's a budget that we can work with. Um, and hopefully, you know, going forward, we'll, we'll figure the tools needed to, uh, ensure that both sides, uh, do what's at the best interest of the town of Tiverton. Uh, Andy, you don't need to take a vote on this, do you?
No. You don't take any action.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the council? Thank you very much. New business. Kate Nishod, Planning Department, request for town council resolution, Enterprise Zone. Gee, long time no see, Kate.
Hi. Um, I distributed packets to everybody, and I'd like to apologize for the length of those packets, but I figured this was a good opportunity to get you as much information as possible about the Enterprise Zone program, 'cause I don't think we've talked about it in quite a while. Um, all of Tiverton is located within the Enterprise Zone, and normally that would offer some tax benefits to businesses who hire new full-time employees, especially if those employees reside within an Enterprise Zone themselves. Uh, changes to the law in 2010 made the applicability of those tax credits limited to just C corporations, of which there are very few who take advantage of the program. Um, there, legislation has been introduced this year in both the House and the Senate to reinstate the tax credit program to the pass-through entities that traditionally took advantage of it, the partnerships, the LLCs, the LLPs, the S Corps. Um, there's nothing being proposed at this time to ink, to change the program any other way, uh, just to allow, um, I believe the statistic was eighty-five to ninety percent of Rhode Island businesses are pass-through entities, so this would just allow more small business to, uh, participate in the program.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I, I, I went through it briefly, 'cause I remember from the last time thinking, oh my God, I'll never be able to read all this in one sitting. Um, but again, I, I think it benefits the town, and, um, I, I think, uh, the request for the, uh, resolution is, is, uh, merit, has merit, and I would ask the town clerk to put the resolution on our next, uh, meeting.
Oh, I didn't put the resolution. It's the town council, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's in the packet, the resolution.
This is a draft resolution on page...
Thank you.
It's at the beginning, fourth page.
Or one, or it's on your next one.
Ah.
Next one.
Actually...
I was looking for it separately.
It mirrors language.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the same resolution, pretty much, is being presented in Portsmouth tonight. They're voting on a resolution as well on the same topic, and there's actually a, a hearing of the Senate Finance Committee on Thursday at three P.M. regarding the Senate Board.
Okay, um, I will, uh, ask, uh, Mrs. Shabbat will, uh, read the resolution.
Okay. Um, excuse me. Resolution of the Tiverton Town Council, resolution in support of H five eight nine two and S oh seven four one, legislation relating to taxation, personal income tax. Whereas, the Rhode Island Enterprise Zone program awards tax credits to businesses for adding new full-time jobs, which is a benefit to the state in reducing unemployment, as well as adding new Rhode Island hires that pay state income taxes. And whereas, changes to the Rhode Island Tax Code in 2010 included the elimination of the use of the Enterprise Zone tax credits by individuals in the filing of personal income tax. And whereas, the aforementioned tax code change can negatively impact the owners of businesses established and operating as pass-through entities, such as LP, LLP, LC, LLC, subchapter S, partnership, sole proprietor, and whereas the majority of businesses, and especially small and startup companies, operate as pass-through entities. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Tiverton Town Council strongly expresses its support of House Bill H five eight nine two and Senate Bill S zero seven four one as introduced. Resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Governor, House Speaker Gordon D. Fox, Senate President M. Teresa Paiva-Weed, State Senators and State Representatives. Passed and approved this eighth day of April, 2013, approved by Edward A. Roderick, Tiverton Town Council, President.
Okay, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? Any, all those in favor? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
I'm gonna put the governor's name. The Honorable Governor.
Fine.
Nancy, you'll get the original copy. No, you'll get the original copy?
She's quick to get ready.
Okay, and can I just make a suggestion, that you put the governor's name in there?
Bob Martin again.
Yeah, okay.
Mentions the people with the power.
I know.
Yeah, but it doesn't have his name.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's a... I think we all know who the governor is.
Yes, but, uh, we, we have enough, uh, issues as it is. Okay, Bob Martin, request amendment to one inch to allow sponsor signs for recreation.
Glad you guys look familiar.
I'm trying to be very brief. What we're looking for here is, there's been some talk, there could be some major sponsors for the recreational slash soccer complex, but when they sponsor to that kinda money, we're talking two hundred and fifty thousand or better, they wanna be recognized naturally. So the sign ordinance, I think, prohibits them from putting up, uh, their sponsor sign or the name or, uh, what we're probably looking for is a scoreboard with that organization's name on it, as an advertisement saying that they sponsored the development of this area. Uh, need guidance as to how we can go around, how we can get that.
Um, I, I...
What we're looking for here is, there's been some talk, there could be some major sponsors for the recreational slash soccer complex. But when they sponsor to that kind of money, we're talking $250,000 or better, they want to be recognized naturally. So, the sign ordinance, I think prohibits them from putting up their sponsor sign or the name or what we're probably looking for is a scoreboard with that organization's name on it as an advertisement saying that they sponsored the development of this area. Need guidance as to how we can go around, how we can get that.
I realize that Tiverton is not other towns and other towns are not Tiverton, but I do, I am involved with a number of different travel teams and I play in another number of different facilities across the state, across the region, across the Northeast. And it's not uncommon to see this type of signage, whereas a small, very discreet advertisement for someone's financial participation in the project is quite common. Again, I know that there are some ordinances in the Town of Tiverton and I think what we're asking here is for the opportunity to be able to acknowledge any large sponsor, like Bobby had mentioned, that may be willing to participate in helping and assisting in building this complex.
Well, I think that's something that we'll have to look into and I think the Town Solicitor will have to look in regards to that type of signage. I know that we had approved signage on the Little League fields with the banners and anything like that. And there were some restrictions, obviously, of the type of people who could advertise, you know, and I would assume those same type of restrictions would be in place for, you know, but again, the scoreboard, I'm not really sure.
That's only an example.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, but to say, so I'm not really sure how that would work. I think if it's on the fencing, then it would probably fall within the same line.
I don't, if I may, I don't think we're looking at the same ballpark.
Figure out how to draft it afterwards, if you could be guiding somewhat. The majority of the Council's looking for it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because I know we did this to the fields already and it went on the fences and so forth. And there were restrictions as to the types of who could advertise.
But if somebody's going to donate $250,000 or more, they want more than just a banner.
No, no, and I understand that, but again, you know, logistics where it would be, so forth. I mean, that's something that we'd have to look at and figure that out. I think just the idea of amending an ordinance to allow it and then you'd have to, Andy would have to look at where it could go and what other restrictions are in town regarding, you know, how high something can be, how big something can be, you know, so forth. So.
I agree. And that's something that we could assist the Council in, making some suggestions as to, you know, where we've seen other types of signage, maybe take some pitches of that type of stuff and bring that in so that, for you to review, to help you make a more educated decision on something like that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Anything else from the Council?
No. Could we ask the Town Solicitor to distribute? Can we get a copy of whatever the current ordinance is to take a look at?
If we could get a copy of that, too.
And forward a copy to the Recreation Committee.
That's the one, Andy, that we did for the ball fields.
Right.
We have that.
I did have one question. With respect to the Little League signage, have we, have you received any sort of complaints at all?
No, not to the rest of my knowledge. The only complaint that I received was, I think it was in October, some of the, we had a storm and some of the signage got knocked, got displaced, which was repaired quickly. That was.
I personally think it looks nice. I mean, I think that that was one of the issues and a legitimate issue that would eventually, you know, nobody would take care of the signs, eventually would deteriorate, would have complaint after complaint and I really haven't heard anything.
No, I haven't either.
No, they've done a nice job.
Absolutely.
So you'll bring forth some ideas from there and Andy will get the ordinance that's in place now.
Bids and requests for proposals, none. Okay, Town Administrator.
Town Administrator.
Recognizing Leonard Schmidt stepping down as Chairperson for the Economic Development Commission.
Sorry for that. Leonard Schmidt has submitted his resignation, not from the EDC, but as the Chairman of the EDC. And I think we owe him a debt of gratitude. He's done an exemplary job reviving that EDC. When I first became Town Administrator, I heard very little about the EDC and it was a very small, non-existent, almost, commission. But since he's been the head of the commission, it's been recognized not only locally, Chamber of Commerce, and at the state level. So we need to thank him and wish him well, even though he's not leaving, he'll still be there, but I don't know what he's going to do with his extra time, so we'll have to wish him well in that. And I believe he's here somewhere, I saw him before.
Is Len here? Hi, Scott.
Actually, Len left as soon as he found out he was on the agenda.
Oh.
Well, for those of you who may not know him, this is Scott Humphrey.
Yeah, Scott, let's come up.
Who is the new Chairperson of the, of the EDC. And I'm sure he'd like to say a few words as well.
Yeah, well said. So as Jim said, Len did step down as Chairman last month at our monthly meeting. There was a vote and I was chosen as the Chairman for the next year or so. In a reflection and in putting together our agenda for this week's meeting, I started to think about all the things that Len Schmidt had accomplished, but most importantly, he put together a small group of people that were passionate about business in Tiverton and how we could improve the business and the residents of the Town of Tiverton and bring that, those two groups together. And I think Len was on the path to getting that done. And also, I'm not sure if you know that Len was part of the commission for nine years. And as Jim said, while he's going to step down as Chairman, he's going to continue on the, on the commission in an advisory role and also part of the transition over the next several months. He still has his feet in the fire and he's been talking it up and I think he is going to be enjoying this role as an advisor more so than being Chairman. He's done a great job, as I said, sort of getting the EDC out on the dance floor, so to speak, and in front of the different commissions and obviously the Town Council. So I want to thank you for that.
Well, obviously, you know, Len, it's going to be a tough act to follow. He has done an unbelievable job with the EDC. I know for one that he opened my eyes to a lot of things regarding businesses in town and he's done a yeoman's job in trying to enlighten people in regards to getting business into Tiverton. And I am sure, Mr. Humphrey, that you will continue that process and endeavor to make Tiverton a business-friendly town. And, you know, and I look forward, and I'm sure the rest of the Council does, in working with you as now is the new Chair. And I congratulate you and I congratulate Len for all his hard work and I'm thankful that he's hanging around for a little while longer so we can continue to pick his brain.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Town's Council, announcements, comments, and questions.
Yeah, I have, I have a reminder that Annual Cleanup Week is from April 13th through the 20th, sponsored by the Tiverton Garden Club and Tiverton Litter Committee. Kickoff is this Saturday, the 13th, at Grinnell's Beach from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And also, another reminder is from the Cassidy Hill Cemetery Commission, as of April 15th, any unauthorized articles will be removed from grave sites in Section 6000 per order of the Cemetery Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have someone else.
Miss? Oh.
We're still on Council.
It's still on Council.
Sure, I just, I just have two. I just, since Mr. Humphrey was up here and we were talking about the EDC, just want to remind folks that we still have to identify a permanent representative from the Town Council to liaison with the Newport County Chamber of Commerce, I think. Is that you?
That'll be my job.
Oh, okay. I take that back then. I love how quickly you took care of that. What else? Can we do that? And then, okay, so that's great. So, the second thing is, and I don't know if you were going to get to it, but April 25th, the House hearing on the tolls.
It's just a reminder, you can go right ahead and do it.
I don't, I believe it's, I don't have the chamber or anything like that, but it's April 25th at 1:00.
Yes.
Can you fill in the blanks?
Representative Edwards, I believe I also forwarded it to all Councilors. Representative Edwards is requesting some testimony or anything else. All I have is what he sent to me, which is that it'll be on April 25th at 1:00 PM. I believe the legislators are on break next week, so it's going to be, and with that in mind, Kate also emailed me one today that there would be a hearing, Kate, on the Dry Lands Bill. Is that, that one as well? Well, that wasn't me.
Someone certainly did email me today and tell me about the Dry Lands Bill as oil legislation.
I just, I mentioned the one on the 25th, I'm going to do what I can to rearrange my work schedule to try to get down from Boston to attend that, but I would, you know, encourage others on the Council if you can be there to, to attend.
Anything else from the Council? Okay. Yes, Jim?
Thank you. Just a website update. RhodeIsland.gov will have a beta site for us in two or three weeks, just to let you know that that project continues to move. Also, that the state is repairing the seawall on Riverside Drive from the Yacht Club South to the First House on the west side of Riverside Drive. That's undergoing right now and it should be completed by mid-June. I testified before the State Pension Review Commission this past Monday and I'm happy to report that everything went well. We won't have the results until, my understanding is, they interview all the cities and towns who are in critical status and then they'll give us some kind of approval, hopefully. I already talked about the Cassidy Drainage. We are working feverishly on getting our Senior Center Refrigerator and Stove Project into CDBG. We're getting quotes and trying to meet their schedule. April 13th to the 20th is going to be a kickoff at Grinnell's Beach at 9:00 AM and this is for conservation, conservation to adopt an area for cleanup. We, there'll be free blue trash bags at the library and we need to notify the DPW for pickup and we stress that the blue bags cannot be put along with your regular trash. Algonquin Gas is extending their 12-inch line a mile and a half. It goes right now down to, pretty near Little Compton. It's roughly going to be a half mile in the rest of Tiverton and then a mile into Little Compton, so there will be some construction going down there. Recycling. This month, the month of March, we recycled 149 tons versus the previous March, 147 tons. Tax collections. As of today, we've collected 93.13% of our levy as opposed to 91% of our levy the previous year. So it's a little better and we're hoping to reach, you know, the maximum. Thank you.
Town Clerk?
No.
Oh, Town Solicitor. I've already heard from the case.
Item K1, this is a draft resolution for authorizing quarterly tax payments. This is something that is set forth in state law. You are required to allow people to pay their taxes in quarterly installments at no additional charge, fee, or interest, as long as those quarterly payments are on time. This is something that was always dealt with in the past by a resolution at the end of the Financial Town Meeting. With last year and the Financial Town Referendum, we don't have a Financial Town Meeting, so this was adopted as a resolution of the Council. And in fact, you've got a redlined, or perhaps I should say, blue-lined version of the changes. Rather than wait till after the Financial Town Referendum, I'm proposing that it be adopted at this time, that this will be deemed to be part of whatever resolution is finally adapted by that Financial Town Referendum, setting forth the procedure the way it's been for the last several years here in Tiverton as far as the quarterly payments and the penalties. I've taken out the years and just the dates and provided that this one will remain in effect until such time as a different one is passed, so we don't have to deal with it each year. And obviously, it's up to you if you want to choose to change it now and whatnot, but this would, this would get it in ahead of time, so we wouldn't have to worry about it after the FTR.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the Resolution for 2013-2014 Quarterly Tax Payment Schedule as fully set forth on Agenda Item K1.
Can I just make one amendment here as I, they just said that, I took out all the dates and I left it in the title. Can we just call this the Resolution for Quarterly Tax Payment Schedule?
Yeah. Take out, delete the 2013-14.
Take out 2013 and 2014 from the title.
Okay. Resolution as amended?
So amended, so amended.
Second as amended.
All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, Town Clerk.
Well, the first, the first item is the scheduling on that April 29th workshop, which I am now going to be scheduling with the Planning Board and I'll keep it open if there are any other items that the Council wants to place on that. That's our fifth Monday that we usually leave for those purposes. Secondly, I had the legislation on the tolls, Council Girl Act's already explained that, and someone did email me about the Dry Lands legislation. I will forward that email to you in the morning. I can't remember who I thought it was, Kate, but obviously I was wrong. And I just want to make a reminder to everybody, on the Financial Town Referendum is on May 15th. We've already been advertising and one of the deadlines is the voter registration deadline. If you want to be able to vote at the Financial Town Referendum on May 15th, then you must register to vote by April 21st. And we're going to be open that day from 8:30 to 4:00. It's on a Sunday, it always seems to land on a Sunday, but it's a requirement and we will be open at, up to that date, so we urge you to come in. Pretty much, the Board of Canvas has been meeting, we're going to follow a lot of last year's procedures with the early voting for the three days. We are having a little bit of issue with our polling places because when they redistrict, we did not go to the new redistricting last May when we had the Financial Town Referendum, but pretty much when they redistrict, the town was kind of divided vertically before and it is now horizontally divided. If there is only one budget on the ballot, then we probably won't need as many polling locations. We use three, but we use three so that we geographically cover the bulk of the town. We're going, the Board of Canvas has voted to continue to use the three this year as well, to give it another year of seeing what happens. So, we're having. Those, well, Country View and VFW and last year we used Sandy Woods, but because of the way the districting is, you still have to stick to districts to be able to print those poll books. I can't divide the town differently just because it's an FTR. What we could do is say, one location, everybody come, but I don't have the parking anywhere for that. So we're trying to get it to amicable, but I did go up to the Board of Elections last week and we discussed some issues with amicable that the American Disabilities has with using that building. So we're working on that. And I just have to make, know. And I just have to make known that petition is optional budgets for any petitioner. They're available as of April 16th. They must be returned to the town clerk by April 23rd. I will incorporate the resolution that the council voted on this evening into the docket in the back of the cover, the same as we did last year. And this serves, the Budget Committee's docket serves as the docket that we will print and put out there available at the library and whatnot. But none of this will become available until I'm sure there are no optional budgets, just so everybody gets the same opportunity to be out there. Okay? That's about all I have.
Excuse me, isn't the FTR on May 21st? Didn't you say May 15th?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, that's last year's FTR. It's May, it's May 21st and 30 days before is April 21st, which is the last day to register.
Can you just read the hearing dates and the-
Oh, yes. There'll be, now, I believe the Budget Committee has another meeting.
We have a presentation on April 24th.
The Budget Committee is going to have one more presentation on their budget on April 24th. But they, they have passed the deadline. What this docket is, is set now. And we are required to have a FTR hearing, which is going to be held at the high school and that is going to be on May 2nd.
What's the hearing for?
It's a requirement of the FTR and any budgets will be presented there for the public. It's-
And that's May 2nd?
For the public to make their comments on it.
And that's at the high school?
That is at the high school.
Okay.
And that is at May 2nd, 7:00 at the high school auditorium. We've already reserved it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. I will entertain a motion regarding executive session, Mr. Lambert.
Before I do-
Before we go.
I'd like to basically remove from the agenda in the executive session the item number four there, which was litigation McGinnis. That was, that was initial, as I mentioned, that the joint meeting with the planning board concerning McGinnis property, and I wasn't sure where we were going with it. We do have pending litigation, but there's nothing to discuss at this point. So there, no need for item number four under executive session.
Okay. Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 424655, Ray Open Space Acquisition of Town Hill Property.
Second.
All those in favor?
And stay in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42465A2, Ray Potential Litigation Stafford Bond.
Second.
All those in favor?
And stay in executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law, 42465A6, Ray Perspective Business or-